All right, so, uh, I think we are supposed to approve the agenda before we start.
I, I, I think that's still me.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda to have executive session at the beginning of the day.
Say.
All right. All in favor?
Yeah.
Motion passes, we'll move the executive session to the end. All right. That was a motion to move the executive session, is a motion to approve the agenda as otherwise.
So, but, so, but, thank you.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just, I, I think, I think we've all had different conversations about this, but I think that, that something that, that a recommendation on that, you, 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 you had to have a discussion when I also had a discussion with, uh, with Jason on it, that, uh, it, it, it's probably something that we really did in the past, but we really didn't, it wasn't a process to it, and, uh, in, in approving the agenda. If, if everybody's in agree to doing that, if, if we really need to, uh, cause at different times, just, I'm stating my opinion and my opinion on it, at different times, people add stuff to the agenda. I'm, like, I may call Jessica last minute, say, I'd like to see this, or call Jason and, and say, I'd like to see this, and, uh, and, and sometimes it, uh, you, you may not be aware of that until the agenda comes out and you're sitting there, and maybe you need more information on what I'm recommending we have on the agenda, so if we approve the agenda at the beginning of each meeting, if that, I mean, there's other ways to do that, I think, right? But, and, and what I haven't been for just approving the agenda, if we approve that, and if, and at that point, and we do that now, if we see changes that need to be made, or we want an item removed, then we all have the opportunity to speak, to move on with it, or take it off for further discussion at other times.
Just adopt it.
Right. Right, just adopt it.
Yeah.
If that, but, and, and I've made that recommendation in the past, and, uh, I think that would be good to just incorporate that into the process, cause oftentimes, uh, the, the most often time the board changes the agenda is when they wanna take a consent item and put it on general business. So that would just be the, the time, that would be just facilitate a process for that and other changes.
Right.
Add.
Right.
Move item number something.
Right. It would definitely be cleaner than the way we have been doing it, I think.
So, I, I'm just saying, well, I, I, I've taken a, a vote actually on it right there.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm okay with that, I, I think that will probably be top of the agenda.
Okay, and, and I think on the agenda, we're gonna talk about actually the conduct of the meeting, and, uh, we'll incorporate that, and maybe there'll be some due outs and some timelines where we wanna, uh, to kinda sort of codify having a good meeting, but, um, maybe have, uh, you know, establish rules and procedures for the year. So, okay, uh, with that then, um, we'll just get straight into new business. Uh, the first item on the agenda is discussion of advertising strategies for open board committees and positions. And I ask for that to be added. So, I noticed, uh, that we often have positions open for extended periods of time. There's one that's been open since I started running for office, uh, and it, it's posted on the webpage, if somebody went to the webpage, they'll see it. But, I, uh, I believe that we can probably, uh, utilize some other methods to help improve. And, and by all means, go out into your districts and try to recruit people to, to participate in, uh, in our local government, and, uh, I really want as much public participation in our local government as possible. And so, um, my thoughts are, uh, we're required by law to advertise in a legal organ, and there, there's a, there's a classified ads section where you put legal notices and stuff. I don't know how much that costs, but I would like to entertain that we do something just a little bit more, uh, you know, a, a larger ad, more visible ad to when we're announcing, uh, these positions. And that costs, uh, some more money, so hearing our first day of the job, then spending some more money, but I don't think that's a lot of money. Um, and then we have the local radio station, uh, you know, I'm sure it'll be in the news, but, you know, what other avenues can we use with that? And if you do not know, I am a huge proponent of social media. I believe you can reach a lot of people very quickly, um, and, and I'll use the example of, um, the warming station, right? I think, Sunday I did a, a little video warming session. And I asked the public to do three things, uh, spread the word, cause people who need the warming station might not have YouTube, Facebook, Twitter, all that, right? Check on your neighbors and take care of your pets, but I asked them to spread the word. In twenty-four hours, that Facebook post has been seen seven thousand times in the community of twenty-eight thousand people. That's the power of social media, right? And I get it, there's a lot of yields of social media, but I think, you know, you can spend five dollars and get stuff in front of a lot of people really fast. And so, I'm a proponent of that, and, you know, Jason and I have talked about, um, the engagement officer, there you go again, talking about more money, uh, but, um, I think, I think we need to do those kind of things. I, I ran on transparency, I ran on, you know, communicating with people and all of them. That's all I wanted to say about that, I want everybody to understand what I'm thinking, I'm not saying that's what we have to do, I wanna share my thoughts and how I, I would like proceed if, if we're okay with doing that. So, I know it's not anything we decide today, but, you know, if we can, uh, maybe assign someone who's gonna try to do those kind of functions, uh, on the staff until we can maybe create that engagement.
So, with that, have we thought about, you know, we had Jessica doing that for a while, um, what, what was the reason behind, are we just not advertising it, or?
Oh, no, we're, I mean, I'm advertising it.
Oh, you are, okay.
It's on, it's always, whenever we have an open, we put it in the paper.
Cause that helped a lot when she was here, just gave somebody, if we knew exactly who was gonna do it, she helped with social media.
It's on the website. Yeah. Right, that was great when we had that person, because they had the time to do it, and make it cute, and make it, you know what I mean, like?
It's marketing.
More presentable.
Right, I mean, like, I can put it together, but it's not.
Yeah, I, I think that, uh, everybody that, well, well, somebody that, but I knew you got, I was a big proponent initially of that, I kind of, I drove the bus on that, well, the bus run over on that, okay? I'm just gonna leave that in back, but, you know, uh, the only thing I'm skeptical of on that is, is this, and then, and then Woods had said, but, you know, we just, we just not too long ago approved the budget.
Right.
We, we went to all our department heads, we told them no new positions, and we, we were unanimous on that. So, you gotta, you gotta practice what you preach, that's the only thing I'm gonna caution you on.
I agree, uh, I hear you, uh, and so I'm not advocating that we created a, a engagement officer position today. I'm advocating that we look at the processes by which we recruit, and we can revisit the engagement officer at some point, and I think that would be a person who could help us with this. But, uh, you know, there can be a division of duties or whatever amongst that, however the manager sees fit, but I wanted to bring that, uh, up, and, uh, the other thing I had noted on there was, um, the application process, like, how we get the applications, you know, there's like thirty days that we have to announce, and maybe it's three times, I'm not, I know all the rules, right? Um, but I look at other counties and how they do things. We have a link, and it gives you a PDF that you can fill out, right? Other counties I've looked at have an online form, you fill it out, you hit submit right there. Ease of access will help get applications. Also, what I saw in other counties is they have policies in place that say, you can apply for this role, you can apply for that role, whichever role is available, even if it's not announced. And your application will go into a pool, and it will stay there for three years. So, you know, today, Dave is interested in being on whatever board, right? We, we, either Dave didn't get selected, or we don't have a position. Six months from now, we need somebody on that board. We're required by law to advertise position, X number of times, wait, I mean, but it would be awesome if we could go back and say, hey, we've had these four other people over the past year or so, inquire about this board, let's reach out to them, we have their application, sit there still, so at least we have, uh, a methodology to, to keep, uh, engagement with folks who might be on, who might be on this board. So, I just wanted to share, I don't wanna brag that, uh, gotta get past the agenda on the one, uh, but is there any other comments on, on that? Any thoughts?
I, I mean, I, I don't wanna be, y'all talk. I think that's how, what catapulted, what you just said catapulted me to where I am today, and let me, let me reflect on that. And, and he's one of those that, one of my members over here, both, I, I applied for a position on the planning commission, well, I wasn't chosen, uh, but that, my, my application stayed on file. So it was about six or eight months later, for some reason, that, 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 that was a position that came up unscheduled, and somebody reached out to me, I don't remember if it was Jessica, who it was, and said, hey, are you still interested in this position, because we have your application, and we posted this, and nobody else applied. Cause I was a little offended that I, and I said, I'm never doing this again. And, uh, but then when they reached back out to me, and they called me, and I said, yeah, I'm interested, and they said, well, we got a vote on it, and they voted on it, and I became a member, and that just kinda catapulted. If they, if they hadn't, if, if it wasn't an ability to reach back out to me, and had, I, that I was somebody that reached back, I probably would've never replied. I, I, I made the determination that they don't want me, no need to apply.
Appreciate that. So, um, Jason, all this is just, uh, you know, food for thought for you and, and the staff. No other comments, we, we move to the second agenda item, which is what we're talking about previously, is the conduct of our meetings, uh, location and schedule. So, uh, if you read the ordinance, we have an ordinance that says how we, uh, have to conduct meetings. It says we, it says we'll meet at the government complex by law for our meetings. It says that we will meet the second and fourth Thursday of each month at seven o'clock. That's what ordinance says, right? So, um, we, we deviated from that, uh, but there's a requirement to review it every year, so here we are. Uh, and I think, uh, we need to assign someone to honcho that ordinance, uh, and I would just like to, uh, throw out some ideas, and then if anybody else has any ideas, I would like to hear from them. And let me, let me say this while I'm talking, cause I'm talking a lot, is I'm not a my way or the highway guy. If I throw out ideas because I saw it somewhere, or I thought about it while I was driving, that doesn't mean my idea is the best idea, I'm perfectly, I want everybody engaged and, and sharing their thoughts, and how, how we can best do what's best for the county. When it comes to the meetings, um, I looked at other counties, and you're gonna hear me say that a lot, right? You're gonna hear me say, I looked somewhere else, uh, because I don't believe in reinventing the wheel. Whatever problem we have here in upstate county, someone else has probably already tackled that problem, right? And so, I believe we should look at counties that are similar in size to ours, have similar demographics in ours, uh, that have similar, uh, geographic structure. They don't have an interstate running through them, and they're not getting a bunch of, uh, one cent sales tax forwarded to them, you know? Uh, it's all about how much money you have, how much resources you have, who the people are, what your problems are. So you'll hear me say that all the time, what are similar counties doing, and what's working well, what's not working well for them? I looked at how other counties run their, their meetings, and what I noticed was there's counties that are much larger than ours, that are far more complex than ours, and they only meet one time a month for a scheduled meeting. But we meet two times a month for a scheduled meeting. And so my thoughts on that are, one, it's not convenient for, for the public to come to government meetings all the time. And so, here are my thoughts, uh, I think, uh, there's always work to be done, uh, that we should consider having one, uh, public scheduled meeting a month. For the end of the month, like, fourth, fourth Tuesday of the month, I think seven PM is better than six PM, that's just my thoughts. And that we should consider having, um, blocked periods during the month, what, because we, I think we all have jobs, for the most part, right? Uh, and, uh, we gotta figure out when we can meet. So we should, we should have an idea of when we can meet, and be able to schedule one to, or two work sessions a month, where we can get together and collaborate with public assess, working on what these problems are, and form the agendas for the meeting that's gonna be the fourth Tuesday of the month. So when we go into the fourth Tuesday of the month, one, maybe we have a consent agenda that's a little longer, and we're not having to talk about stuff that doesn't necessarily require a public hearing. Anybody who wants to can still come and speak publicly on anything that's on the agenda beforehand, but, um, I think we could be a lot more efficient that way. That's my thoughts, my observations, that doesn't mean that's the case. Yes, jump in quick.
Um, my question would be to staff, cause I know a lot of times, y'all see it helpful having those two opportunities, be able to put something on the agenda, let us vote on it. So that'd be my question, is staff wise, do you feel like that's gonna give you enough opportunity each month to be able to do that?
Well, I'll, I'll speak from my point of view, but I, I think you probably wanna hear Heath and Jessica's point of view too. I, I wouldn't, I mean, my own personal preference, I like the idea of a regularly scheduled work session and, and a voting meeting. Um, the, it, you know, this is now my fourth position in Georgia, this is the only, uh, organization I've worked for where we had a formal meeting twice a month, other than once a month. But I, what I can say is that these work sessions are extremely important, and it helps us build, I mean, in, in other words, by the time you get to a, a time that you're voting on something as a board member, it's already been vetted, it's nothing new, and every once in a while, in those other organizations that I worked in where we needed to get something done quickly, there's nothing preventing you from, from having a small voting session on a work session if you have to approve a contract quickly, or if you have to make a quick decision, so.
That would sound valid.
The last thing I would add was, my recommendation would be if you make that change, enshrining it in the ordinance, um, we're gonna have to still leave the language that's in there that says, or otherwise directed by the board, because every once in a while, you're not gonna be able to meet, uh, meet that timeline. I mean, y'all, I think we basically have, every board member is doing something primary, in that their function as a board member is secondary. Um, so you're gonna need that flexibility, there is that language that's in there currently that says, and/or otherwise by, you probably don't wanna get rid of that, but. But anyway, so I think that would be a welcome change for, for my, for my point of view, but ha, in discussions we've had on this before, in my six and a half years, the one thing the board didn't wanna give up was that ability for come, people to come speak and public comment. And that was the reason we never made the change, so.
So. They still have that.
Yeah, they still have it.
Do you want that, anybody?
No, um, the only, well, yes. The, it's very hard to match schedules, and so, that normally is left up to me, to try to get everybody together, and it's like herding cats, when we don't have scheduled meetings. Can you meet this time, or I can't meet this time, or I can't meet this day? So if we're gonna, it, I'm okay with the, I don't have a problem at all with the changes, but just make sure we have, um, scheduled, set date, and possibly as close to set time as possible, you know what I mean? Like, that would be my only.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with both of y'all, um, and actually, what, what you said, I, initially, I was a little hesitant when I kinda heard the idea floating of just doing, you know, conducive and all in the one, um, voting meeting, I'll call it, uh, or public meeting. But, based on what you said, on the consent agenda, I mean, that makes a lot of sense, if we met before, and we had quite a bit on the consent agenda that we've already worked through. And to Jessica's point, um, like you said, everybody else has got other things they're doing as well, we just need to make sure, for instance, you said the last Tuesday of the month, which I think is great, we are, everybody already has that on their schedule, and then this work session, um, you know, that we typically do, or have done, um, we, we actually just implemented that, what, about three years ago, I think?
First Wednesday of the month.
Yeah, first Wednesday of the month, I, I would just ask, because I've, I've set my schedule pretty much for the year.
Yeah.
To at least have that one, and then.
That's what I'm saying, conceptually, I would say, conceptually, in the ordinance, we're required to meet the fourth Tuesday of the month. No other meetings are required by the law, right? But conceptually, we say, we're gonna meet the fourth Tuesday of the month for a public meeting. We got on our books the first Wednesday of the month for a work session, all right? The second or third could possibly be an additional work session, depending on what we're trying to tackle, what we're trying to coordinate with staff.
Flex session.
It's a flex session, right? Also, because we, we would publish a schedule that only says we're meeting this one time, if we say, hey, now we have some stuff that we really need to move forward, right? We can say, well, what we wanna do is a week ahead of time, let's announce that, we can come out of the first work session and say, let's announce a special call meeting the second Tuesday of the month to cover these things that we're gonna have, we believe we're gonna have a lot of discussion with the public, right? And that doesn't tie up our regular meeting.
So.
That's not every month.
No, 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 just real quick, cause two, two things. A, a schedule has already been approved for twenty twenty-five, not that that can't be changed, but just so you know, it's out there. Another thing to think about is, um, planning and zoning. I don't know how much scheduling he's done currently for his, um, his public hearings and stuff that he has going on, so he, let's think about that before.
I think he could be probably adjusted.
I don't think we have anything noticed, I'll double check, I don't think we have anything noticed.
Yeah, if anything, we, we're, we would be giving the folks more time.
Yeah, we're giving them more time.
That's a good point.
Now, if I may, Mr. Chairman, um, more, more time for the applicant is not seen as positive.
That's right, that's right.
More time for the public, they'll, I mean, the public will see that as positive, the applicant will see that as a negative, so.
Right.
But, you know, I'm, I'm just, again, I just looked at the other counties, and like, we're, we seem to be an outlier with the two meetings.
We are.
Uh, and I have a job, and my job I worked during that time, so, I'm just looking at it realistically.
I think some of our meetings have been pretty quick and not necessary.
Yeah, I've, I've been meetings, I've drove an hour to come to the meeting, and I've been out of that meeting and listened an hour, and I gotta drive an hour back to work, and I'm like.
So, just, just to clarify for me, I get it, and I, 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 the only thing I would like to say is that we're gonna have work sessions, that we try to nail it down for at least a period of time, uh, cause, cause once again, right now, just like he says, I can plan an entire, I can, it, it, plan an entire year, based on, I, I know that in my personal and my professional things, I, I know, okay, I need to set aside this day, I don't need to take a vacation day, or I don't need to schedule a meeting at work, you know, to try to make my obligations as a commissioner. I would just like for us to appro, try to, you know, and everything's, everything we do is up, subject to change, but to try to approve something that says when we're gonna try to schedule these days and approximate time, so we can set this aside, because what I think is important, it, having the meetings is important, but what's, having everybody in attendance is more important.
Yes.
Yeah, that's why I like the idea of, let's, you know, work sessions the first Wednesday of the month, since it sounds like a lot of us have already kinda planned, and then if we do that fourth Tuesday for the, you know, regular meeting, we're already.
So we're talking about having just two meetings, potentially three?
We're having two meetings, and we have the capability to have what other meetings we, we like, but we would, we would, we would say, uh, our potential second work session would be either the second or third, whatever we can agree, but that's not tentative thing, not always on schedule, and it doesn't have to be, uh, codified, because that's not one of the meetings that has to be codified. The only meeting that has to be codified is that fourth Tuesday of the month that's in the.
Well, we would probably know at the first work session.
Exactly.
And decide, everybody could look at their schedule then, and decide on a day for second if necessary.
So could you potentially use the second Tuesday as your second work session, since that's already a day we currently have?
Cause it, it could be a, a call meeting where we need to vote, or it could be an additional work session.
That's what I was gonna say, would add to what Jason said, if we're gonna do the work session, then the ability to vote, because there may be some, I mean, you, it's an ability to vote anyway, but we just have a consent, y'all have a consent that you don't.
It's just been an agreement, though.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say something that's contradictory of my beliefs, but, since we're having this, uh, you know, I, I have a problem voting in a, a work session, but if we don't vote in a work session, since we've been doing it on YouTube, I, I, if I'm gonna take a vote for the people I represent, I won't in the bed to say that. That's just my thought. Now, I'm, I'm, obviously, I'm on, on, I, I think there's pros and cons to being, putting work sessions on, but if we're gonna vote, we'll, people need the ability to go back, cause I don't wanna have to defend myself in an action that I, you know, and, and just say, take my word for it, you wasn't there, but I didn't do that, I won't in the bed to go back and bear it.
All right. We, we've talked about a schedule, right, and we'll conceptualize that, and bring it forward before the board.
I would just recommend that you, you allow Heath and I to, uh, make some draft changes to the ordinance for y'alls consideration.
Yes.
Let me throw something else out there, now, we did talk about planning and zoning. Is there anything in the ordinance, because after planning and zoning, there was what, fifteen days? After they make a decision, do we have to vote on something they got?
I don't know if it's fifteen days, but that, I think it's just the advertise, the net, the advertising of fifteen days, right?
For a public hearing.
It's really a minimum time, not a maximum time.
And I think that's something that Doug could, he, he's working off our schedule, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so we have schedule, we have location, the location in the ordinance right now is, uh, the government complex, right, that's in the ordinance. I, uh, agree with that, I don't disagree with having a work session here, my only, um, con, condition, only thing I, you know, I, I ran on transparency, I would like all our meetings to be, uh, available on YouTube Live, and so, there's ways to do that, obviously, and so, um, I, I say that, and I'm open to any thoughts on, on that.
It sounds like that's what Commissioner Ellington would do.
Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna vote, I mean, I, 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 I won't, I won't have a bill, but, can, can I say this, just, you know, we list the government complex, I mean, um, you know, prior to you, there, there was some, we had some one-on-one debate about, you know, we got the new justice center, and we have a facility down there, and my understanding is, it's, it's set up regularly, it has the cameras ready for you to, it's, it's amplified. I, 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 I think that we probably need to at least add that to, not that we, it just means, if we're gonna update our ordinance, we need to add that to the ordinance, so that if we choose to use that location for some reason or another, that we have that.
And I think, um, the agenda going out, you know, is gonna say where we're gonna have a meeting, I think there has to be some flexibility in where we, we should have a primary meeting location. I'm not opposed to meeting where it makes the most sense, I would just like that we have that capability to keep.
I, I would just make the recommendation that if you're gonna have a solid monthly meeting, that, it, that needs to be consistent, that, that doesn't, you know what I mean? I don't think we need the, for that one meeting, that's gonna be enshrined in the ordinance, it needs to. that's going to be enshrined in the ordinance, it needs to always be in the same place.
Fourth, yeah, fourth Tuesday.
And really, truly a work session as well, just because everybody.
Schedules.
Yeah, um, but in our.
Call meeting, I mean, we, it, it's set up to where we could use it for a call meeting, no, no problem, but.
Yeah, I mean, my thought is, at the work session, like you said, I think we would know if we potentially need that second meeting and we can decide if it's going to be an additional work session or if it's going to be a voting meeting. If it's a voting, we have it at the government complex. If it's a work session, we have it here. And I think I mentioned to you beforehand, my thought on work sessions are, I see this as a time, roll up sleeves, get in the weeds and, you know, having people sit around a conference table instead of on a podium. It, it just makes department heads, I think, feel a little bit more comfortable, keeps the conversation more open.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not opposed to being here at all. I only have one thing that, my mantra is that, is transparency.
Yeah, this is more conducive to.
More practical.
Well, I mean, it's just more conducive to getting, getting things done, because it's hard to look at a man's face on the other end of the bench. You know, I'm sitting here looking at all y'all, I can read your face. You can read my face. So, around a conference table somewhere, you know, if it's here or we build another little place out, you know.
I agree. I think, I think you know, can nub that out, right?
Yeah.
Uh, the last part of that is the meeting conduct, right? And so, I don't think it says so much in ordinance how we actually run the meeting. It says Robert's rules and it says or some variance that we approve. I would ask that we go and look at actually, uh, creating, uh, rules and procedures, uh, that we just, you know, vote as a policy and, you know, we can renew it every year, but just that we have something written down, that's how we do it. And I emailed each of you this morning a copy of Coweeta County, but you know, I'll tell you, I'm going to go look at other counties and, and they have, here's the rules and procedures, how we run our meetings. Uh, and here's the, here's the shorthand version of our Robert's rules. These are the things we're going to use. Um, and so it's just a handy reference. They have a, a one-page little cheat sheet, uh, deal, and I'm not a parliamentary, uh, person, so, um, I sent a couple of different counties, uh, things, and I'm all about cut and paste and change this to up some, so, uh, I would just ask that we look at doing something like that and if we can get a board at some point, we, after a work session, we've all agreed that that's how we move forward.
And I think, um, maybe going back a couple of years, you, you, you've already done this legwork and research and we may just dig back into your file. This came up at a work session a couple of years ago and it just, um, really fell to the bottom of the priority list and we never followed through with it. So this is something we've looked at before.
All right.
And, and if I might say, like, one of the, I think one of the things that I think we were, where we misfire in the meetings is that there's comments before emotions made. So, um, if you read Robert's rules, you know, there, there's no discussion without emotion.
Yeah, and it makes for a smoother meeting when motions are made first, so. I will learn and we'll get there. All right, uh, and so the last thing I had, uh, note on that was, um, whatever we adopt. Right, uh, I think it should be the, uh, rules and procedures for all boards we have preview, purview over. So any board that we are, you know, the appoint, the appointees, we, we appoint the personnel to and we have the ability to overhear and remove personnel from, but that's not all boards, right? But the boards that are, are purviewing, they should follow those same rules as, as, as upstate county.
With that being said, um, I think that, well, like the chairman said, that's dependent on which board it is, because some of that's, uh, I think some of those, that's governed by state law or by their enabling legislation, if it's a constitutional or statutory.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, that we have purview.
Yeah.
Not that, no, I know we, we send people to the board of assessors. We have the purview over the board of assessors, I understand.
Yeah, but Planning Commission, that might be more inappropriate.
But we would want to do that by, when we've, we're, when we started down this road, I was thinking, okay, well, if it's rules and procedures for how we want to conduct a meeting, I was thinking, we just do that by resolution. But I think if we want, say, the Planning Commission to follow that format, it would have to be by ordinance.
We would want to enshrine it in the ordinance rather than do a resolution, because I'm not sure we could resolve for another board to do something. We would have to actually put it in the code. You put it in the code to get them to do it, so.
I, I, I think there's language in the ordinance that says that, uh, Robert's rule or, or what we adopt. I think it's a very simple language that says that all boards of our purview will use Robert's rules or words or the rules that we adopt, something to that effect. All right, I talked too much, sorry. Uh, any other discussion on that?
Mr. Chairman, uh, may I address the board?
Uh, that, we don't want to do that in a work session. Yeah, it's not, it's not a public, uh, interaction. Okay, um, the next thing on, any other comments on, on meetings? Um, next thing on the agenda is vice chair candidates.
Well, that, that's like a Dylan point.
Okay, so what I'm reading here is the, uh, um, is, is, it's been a long time since Ben's been the vice, and, and I mean, Chris, Chris hasn't, Chris hasn't been the vice, uh, but, uh, I mean, we won't do any nominations here, but, you know, I think we should know if, if people are willing or, you know.
Yeah, and I, you know, we took the rotate and I knew this was going to be potentially my year. My only concern is with my schedule, work schedule, I'm just a little concerned I may not have the ability to do some of the things that may be needed, but, I mean, we can try.
Is there a provision to relieve him of those duties if he?
Okay, uh, is there anybody who wants to be vice chair? Did they come out right? Well, of course, they do. Is there anybody else?
I don't mind being vice chair. I know James is, you know, James has got a steady job too. Ben, I know Ben has to travel a lot, so it's up to them to, to nominate somebody.
Okay.
It don't hurt my feelings.
Okay. Okay, so, um, we do that at the first meeting, first, we'll have a nomination, so we'll be prepared, uh, somebody nominate somebody. Next item on the agenda is the ethics ordinance. I think, uh, it was provided to us. And I read through this online, you know, went to MuniCode and found it and, uh, read it and, uh, it sounds pretty like standard, I would say. Uh, it, it, I think it probably meets the test blocks on certain areas.
It was probably copied from another candidate.
Exactly, um, so, uh, Chris and I, Chris and I just went to, um, the newly elected, uh, commissioners training, right? And, uh, they spend an inordinate amount of time on open meetings and open records, right? And I think tried to scare us, I'm not sure. So, um, but again, uh, they brought in, um, uh, chairman and county manager from, uh, other counties and they shared some of their thoughts and, um, in, uh, one county in particular was Haverisham County. Um, and they, uh, shared with us their amendment that they just passed. And it basically creates, again, a pool of, of personnel who are, for lack of a better word, an ethics panel, right? So, when, when we receive a phone call, the county manager gets a call and says, yeah, I saw so-and-so here doing this or what? County employee or whoever, um, how do we, how do we look into that? The Justice Director looks into it, uh, uh, I don't know. Uh, but in their, in their, uh, amendment, they have, uh, people who are empowered to kind of inquire. And then they do the inquiry, then they come back to the board and they recommend, well, it really should be a policy change, you know, or it should be, uh, uh, disciplinary action or, or things like that. I just, I just throw that out there that maybe that's something we can look at, uh, again. Just one of my meeting notes, I've already shared, I don't know how many notes with Jason, and I know we can't do everything at, at one time. Uh, but, uh, you know, I think we're always going to run into those issues where there's a perception of this, right? And there can be perceptions of things. That doesn't mean there's something wrong. Oftentimes, you have to address perceptions of, and so it may be that we have to address perception, we may have to address a procedure, we may have to address a policy, uh, we may have to address conduct, but I think we should have something more formal than what I've read, is, is all I'm saying. If we could.
And for employees, we do have a, a, really, a, a, and, and a very comprehensive sort of, we call it a whistleblower policy that basically lays out the steps for someone to, ways that misconduct can be reported. So, and, uh, as part of it, go ahead, Heath.
Well, it's, it's in, in the e- ethics, uh, ordinance, the last section, section H kind of, um, covers, and you may just want it to be a, a little different, but it's basically any, any complaint that's made by anyone, it would come to the county manager and the county attorney and we would, like you were saying, basically act as the board to determine if it had merit, if it has merit, then it moves to the board of commissioners. But, I mean, so it's kind of covered in there, what, what I think you're trying to accomplish, but, um, I don't know if you want more specifics, more steps, more.
I don't know. All I did was I just wanted to share with you what we learned, what we saw. Uh, I'm, I'm all about, if you see something good, copy it. But again, if it takes more resources, maybe we don't, but I, I shared it with you in the email, um, earlier this morning. I shared it with everyone on the board, uh, this morning, so I just wanted to, uh, put that out there. Um, any other discussion on that?
The, the one thing I would like to see is that, um, I, what I see in other people's ethics ordinances relating to like, uh, interaction with vendors and things. I think that's one of the things ours lacks, but I, Heath and I were talking about that over the break in a more casual conversation, but, um, I think maybe having a little more guidance there might be worth looking at, and so. So if anyone says, hey, you know, you know, can I go out to dinner with this person or, you know, or whatever it is, it, just speaking from a staff, you can just look and see, yes, I can, or no, I can't, you know?
Yeah, I, I've already had, as chairman, I'll let, and as chairman, people approach me and offer me this or try to do that. You know, my answer's just no. It, it might be perfectly legal, but my answer is no, but your answer doesn't have to be no if it's legal, right? So, it, it does need to be kind of less gray.
I just think for, I mean, just for the employees, I mean, it would be, it would be nice to have a little better guidance as to what. Now, I mean, there's enough guidance in there to say, hey, don't violate state law, which, you know, which we know not to do, of course, but. But yeah, so I.
Ours is pretty clear.
I, I, um, I, but commissioners, it's, it's, it's pretty clear.
They probably talked about it at job.
And they probably found that, they scared you to death. I can't borrow your pencil, but, you, you know, so I, I, I'm assuming we're talking about.
The county.
Right, so, so would, how would that, I mean, I don't know, how would that, how would that, what's the separation there between employee handbook, innostrals and, I, I'm just curious, I, I don't know.
As far as, um.
It's pretty detailed in our handbook, but there's no, but there's no, there's nothing enshrined in the ordinance, you know?
Well, what's going to succeed, I mean, if we have, we can't have conflicting.
The ordinance would succeed.
The employee handbook. Yeah, and so in Haverisham County, what they did is they did an amendment to their ordinance.
Well, we would have to update our handbook, obviously, because, because of federal labor laws. If it ain't in the handbook, you have fewer ordinances, but if it ain't in the handbook, it's not enforceable.
To, to be clear, so the handbook's done by resolution. I, I think all the ordinance needs to say is, as, yeah, and it just references the handbook, so anytime, you know, y'all change our handbook twice a year when we ask y'all to make amendments to it, so. That we're just enshrining the handbook in the ordinance and then, then we're good.
But I, I guess this is what I'm going, just from, from a legal standpoint of it is, I'm not against it, I don't know, I'm just saying, we, we would probably need to update that handbook, because we don't tell the, the employee doesn't sign anything saying they read our ordinance.
Yeah, exactly.
I, I mean, the company I work for, I'll read the, the board meeting notes. Uh, I, I, I got an employee handbook and I referenced that one. I, I need a tool to see what my guidelines are. I, you know, we don't, I want, want unintentional consequences that, if, if my handbook tells me I'm able to do this and I go and do it and somebody goes, ah, come on in. Look, as ordinary as you can't do that right there. How enforceable is that going to be? That's, that would be my only concern. We, you know, we should only, for our employees, we should only have one.
Yeah.
It's just a reference back to the.
Well, and it depends on what you're trying to do in that situation. If you're trying to terminate the employee based on the conduct, I mean, I think it would be sufficient at that point, because, I mean, essentially Georgia's an at-will state anyway. So, that's just kind of a double and triple layer that we have in place, but I agree with you, to clean it up better, it would be nice. All employees sign, yeah.
Everyone signs when they come on, that they receive a copy, you know?
But you don't say, you, you sign and say, copy their full handbook, you don't say you read the ordinance.
It needs to say, I have read the handbook and I agree with the terms.
Well, and, and maybe to, let me clean up what I said earlier. The ordinance for ethics is really just directed towards public official. So not employee. Okay, so it's really, um, yeah, no county official shall, and that's, it's addressing a county official, so. That's where I think the handbook would, since number one, we have one, number two, they're signing off, acknowledging it, then we could enforce it. If it's sufficient enough to cover what we're trying to cover.
Exactly. In other, in other words, um.
Just separation is all I'm saying. Look, if, if, if that ordinance is not going to apply to the, a, a county employee, a road farmer, that, that, that's the way I like to say it. These rules need to be in writing in your handbook. For me, okay, if there's a set of rules for me, that's absolutely fine, but, uh, you know, we just need them defined, you know? Uh, and, uh, I, I thought we had it pretty well, but I don't know, I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm open.
I, I was asked that we look at it. I, I, you know, I'm new here, I'm trying to, trying to wade through, right, so.
That was my, my mistake. I, I was, when he said it, I, I can set it myself, I can set it myself.
All right, um, any other discussion? Uh, next item on the agenda is discussion of the zoning text changes and the key facets, lots I sit back and sit around. Um, so, um, you know, there's a hundred and fifty-five pages to that.
Excuse me, that's the whole, not the changes.
Yeah.
Changes are only that.
Yeah, well, the changes are across one hundred and fifty-five pages, right? And I think it is very, uh, complicated for, uh, citizens of our county to understand what all is trying to be done at one time, right? And so, uh, um, I think you have somewhere else on here, we're talking about, uh, a matrix. I, um.
Well, to that, I mean, could staff put together like an executive summary? Whenever we have those changes in there, maybe all in one place?
Yeah, and so, executive summary, I think, is, is fine for us to, but what we're trying to do is we're trying to explain to the public what we're trying to do. What we're trying to do that's gonna affect them, right? And I think it's a, messaging is a challenge, right? So, and, and, and the more there is to cover at any one time, the more muddy it can be. Because someone's, someone's looking at this part of this uh zone, and someone's looking at that part, and you're never gonna get a consensus on all this, right? And so my thoughts on this are a couple of things. As a, as a citizen who, who witnessed it all, I never understood what it was, what problem we were trying to solve. Right, uh, it was, we want to maintain our rule identity, right? And I would, I would challenge you, what does that mean to you, right? I grew up on a one acre lot in a subdivision in very rural Decatur County. It was rural, right, but it was a subdivision. Some people live on hundred acres, right, that's rural. Uh, so I don't, I don't know that that's a well-defined problem that we're trying to solve. And then I heard, we want to control growth, right? How, how you do that, right? What does that mean? What kind of growth do we want? I, I think all those are very conceptual problems that are hard to define. And uh, trying to do it across a hundred and fifty-five pages and explaining it to the public is gonna be challenging. So, that was my, my, my thought, is what's the problem? And if it's rural and growth, uh, how do we do that? And I think less is more, I'm a less is more person, right? So if you want to address A zoning, right? If you want to address AR at one time, go after AR. If you want to address R one, go after R one, but to go after everything at one time, I think is way too much. What I got out of it was a couple of things, flag lots, right? There was a lot of talk about flag lots, right? Some do not think they're aesthetically pleasing. Okay, but it's not my land, it's your land. If you want to put more trees on your land to block the drive, so we don't see there's another drive next to it, there's things you can do, but. I don't know that it's the government's role, this is my personal opinion, I don't know that it's the government's role to be in that kind of weeds in personal property. My personal thoughts. Where I, where I do think flag lots are an issue is when it comes to safety, right? I live out where Jeff Davis and seventy-four meet. Lots of flag lots out there, right? There are lots of eighteen-wheelers out there, and there are tons of driveways out there. That's where it really becomes a government issue, right? Because our role as a government is to protect the citizenry and assert the citizenry. So, that is one way I think we look at it, and again, I go and I look at other counties, right? And I see other counties, they have subdivision portions of their zone, just subdivision. And they have very simple matrices, right? It says, if you want to build a subdivision, you're a developer, you're the landowner, you want to build a subdivision, you want to have twenty-five lots, right? You got fifty acres, you want to have twenty-five lots. That's fine, you as a developer must provide a road for your subdivision. So there's only one road or two roads coming into the county road or the state highway, right? And all your, all your lots go into that road, right? And there's homeowners associations and things that take care of those roads. Does the developer uh lose some money in that deal because now he or she has less land? Yeah, that helps control growth, because people aren't, you know, I gotta put more money into this. I'm just saying there's other ways to do things, right? And so I've seen that in other counties, I see it in their ordinances in other counties, in their zoning in other counties. Also, Chris and I were there, Fayette County spoke to us, how do they control growth? Everybody's been to Fayetteville, right? Fayetteville's nice, man, they got theaters, they got movie people there, they got a lot of things you can do in Fayetteville. But you can also drive five minutes out and be in a very rural area. They control growth through sewage. Where's the sewage at here? Thomasville controls the sewage, right? So, um, it's gonna be hard to put in uh, an apartment complex out on Jeff Davis Road. There's no sewage, right? The, the uh, state guidelines is minimum of one acre to have a septic system. So there's ways, all I'm saying is there's, there's ways to do these things that we say we want to do, right? Without maybe adjusting a hundred and fifty-five pages of stuff and trying to explain it to the public. And I would just ask that before that comes back, before that comes back to us. That, you know, we, we meet with the planning of zoning or, and, and talk about these things and, and really define. What is it that we really want to tackle? And let's go for that piece first, right? And just take it in bite-sized chunks so that we can message properly to the community, community understands why, what we're trying to fix, if we're trying to fix something. And, and why we're trying to do it.
Well, and, and one thing on that, I think really the main reason that even came up was to prevent a Cheryl Jean type of subdivision.
Yeah, and full body enforcement, uh, uh. Yeah, I mean, it, well, I think it was more, I think that was.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're saying.
It's the classification of your, your property based upon size. Because upstate county, you know, uh, still is pretty young to the, to the, to the game of, uh, you know, qualifying properties to say what, what, what zoning they are. And, and for the most part, most of the stuff, mu- about ninety percent of the stuff outside City Limpson, Tom's, is AR. Regardless of the lot size, so, and we had a lot of issues uh, related to, uh, you know.
I, I haven't heard.
Cheryl Jean, right, you got people calling, well, hey, you got, and I mean, we, we, and, and, and a lot of instances, believe it or not, we don't, we don't, we don't like to admit it, but we, we are reactionable to it. Um, you know, when people have a problem, we try to react to the problem, and, and I think we were trying to react to a problem we had, and we've seen that problem potentially grow. Uh, but, you know, I don't, I don't disagree, because uh, it, it, I think, as a matter of fact, most of the people in this, well. I would say everybody in this room, probably at most of those meetings, and people were confused. I mean, guys, I know I stood outside for forty-five minutes talking to people and they were ready, but just hang me up on uptown.
And they're probably coming at you from different angles on different things.
So, that was, hey, I was confused, okay?
But it boils down to the, the Cheryl Jean situation is, you know, a hundred acre AR shouldn't have the same rights as a two acre.
Right.
That's AR, that was really the meat behind pursuing that.
And I think we get, and I think what happens is our, our messaging wasn't clear, number one, to the board that we asked to come up with. And it just walked into a, a situation.
Well, I would love to sit down and have these conversations with, with board, you know. Uh, and I, I hear your point two hundred versus two, right? Uh, my argument to that is, how we operate is what we call farms in the United States of America, right? Because you don't have to have a hundred acres to be a farm, you can have an, an eighth of an acre to be a farm. You may have honeybees, you, you, there's other things, but you have to be in that AR area uh, to be able to do those things, right? And, and, and get certain tax ex- uh exemptions to be able to run your farm. So I think there's a lot more complexities to it than what we would, you know, I wish it was simple, but it's not, right? So I just want us to take a step back, if we can agree to take a step back and, and, and try to take off, you know, bite-sized pieces of that.
I think one of the things that would be helpful is that if maybe myself and some of the staff sat down with our two new commissioners and went through. The program from our retreat last year where we did all of the um, like-sized county comparisons. And, you know, basically how we sort of modeled the solution after places like Pike, Lamar, Harris County, you know. Not just neighbors, but um, we looked at Green County, we looked at a few others that were sort of similar in size and scope and trying to, you know. And were battling some of the same issues that this board wanted to tackle. If, if we maybe took our new members back and just sort of gave them that presentation again, and then gave them the summary again, then. You might be able to come back as a board and direct us on, as a staff, as to, all right, well, now that we have our new members caught up. What do we want to try to tackle first? Would that be a way to, to try to knock this out?
I mean, we kind of put it on hold at this point.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, I think, the board ran into what you're talking about, and was like, hey, let's, let's pump the brakes on this thing.
We, we realized. Okay, because this was really the sort of the dominant subject of our retreat last year, and so.
Yeah, let me throw a couple of things at y'all, but I got out of all that. You know, our intention was because of lack of code enforcement for the people that live in AR. There were subdivisions created with smaller lots. That were never, should have been zoned AR. I don't know that you can even go back and change that, but to stop future development. With the Cheryl Jean thing especially, that was the one that got most of the things on, was somebody had a bunch of pigs. And that pigs, they couldn't keep them up, and it ain't destroying people's property. And because it was voted, I mean, it was, it was zoned AR, you couldn't prevent them from having twenty-five pigs on one acre. And so that was the main cause of trying to change that. Now, part of the other part where everybody was hollering about, um, if we uh, made it AR, anything less than twelve acres. That they wouldn't be able, they, they couldn't build their thousand eighty-square-foot house. Because if you went to R one, there, there are different Rs. And R one was, you know, I can't remember, twenty-two hundred square feet or something, which is a figure out. But R two is the same size houses in AR, it depended on the zoning. People didn't understand that, they were thinking, I can't afford to build a two thousand square foot house, well, I understand that. You know, but you get on down to the seven hundred fifty square foot, it has to be on sewage, so that, you know, we don't have candidate having sewage. But, you know, it was, it was a, uh, in my personal opinion, it was a good thing that we, you know. We started working on it, because we did, we do gotta make some changes, because the people that come in here and buy up the land. Don't live here, won't ever live here. They take their money from our county, leave us with what they leave us with in their county, their money, the money goes back to wherever. And, you know, if, if, if it was an in- individual that, that lives here in the community, that did something, they gotta live with. But the people that build these uh, houses, like flag lots and everything else, I mean, I, you know. I think my county has, my, my county, my district has more of the uh, private roads. In the subdivisions than anybody else in the whole county. And uh, we get a lot of calls on maintaining their private roads, which is what we cannot do, we cannot, we do not own any of them. And they're not dedicated to the county, they won't give up the right way, and uh, you know, we, we, we have to address that somehow. We got a lot of work to do.
Uh, I don't, Mr. Chairman, I don't want to belabor this, because I know we have a lot, we're gonna ease into this. But a- along with what Commissioner Jones is saying, it's like, um, and we do currently have interested parties that are looking at. You know, two, three hundred acre tracks, breaking it up into two acres, and of course, they're gonna do well in septic on every single one of them. I mean, not sustainable for growth, I mean, if, if the entire county grows out in two acre lots with well and septic. I mean, ha- having worked in a community where you had a seven or eight hundred parcel subdivision that was all on well and septic, and it all failed. And then, then the county had to jump in over the course of about five or six years and run water and sewer to that entire community while they were like. Having to get potable water in there and so, only because it was developed with very poor regulations in the eighties, you know. I think to Commissioner Jones's point, whether it's private roads that seem like a great idea at the time, but. The HOA never materializes and they never maintain anything, private water systems, we got a few of those, which are not being maintained very well. Um, all you have to do is open Facebook to see that, because a lot of the calls will get to the county, it's like, hey, are we having a problem out on someone's road? I'm like, no, that's a private water system, that's not the county water system, so. And then, of course, in some previous experiences I've had, this was a county in Florida where you had big, beautiful subdivisions on. You know, acre and a half, two acre lots, everything well and septic, that the wells started going bad, the septic systems were never kept up, and it just, you know, it's not a sustainable way to grow, so. And I think that is largely what led us to try to figure out how to tackle this problem. It's like, nah, we don't, people shouldn't have the opportunity to do that, but what's the best way to prevent what we know is already happening? So I think that was, that was the perspective that the board gave the staff that we tried to tackle.
All right, so I think we circle back. The next item was, it was tied to this, was the subdivision uh, matrix and permit. I don't have a copy of uh, the Excel spreadsheet I sent you a little while back, but again, I, I just think we should have something very simplistic that. Anybody can walk up to and understand where they stand and they are, where, where they stand if they're R one. If, you know, you don't have to read a hundred and fifty-five pages, it's a matrix that says, you know, this is a uh, minimum setback from the road. This is uh, minimum acreage size, this is a minimum dwelling size, whatever that is, right now, it should be very.
We don't have anything like that, finding zone.
So I, I did, I did, uh, I was there actually, working, working to get a permit, uh, we had, and had some discussion, um, and um, I forget her name. Lillipen, uh, she does have something, it's a, it's very text-oriented, um, uh, you know, not matrix. So I think the uh, the idea is already in the, in the office, but I think we can uh, you know, staff it to a more uh, usable document. We can talk about uh, that later in staffing, it's uh, I'm, I'm very much a, how can we, how can we identify this problem and explain the situation, whatever it is? And, you know, an argument is called OV one, operational view one, I. Can you, can you, can you explain to me on one page, preferably graphically? What is, what is the issue and how we can conduct operations to solve it? Again, dealing with, with senior leaders, I couldn't give them a hundred and fifty-five pages, I had, I had five minutes of their time. That's the kind of thing we need for our citizens, because it's the same way, you only have a certain amount of time to uh, gain their confidence that they know what's going on, so. Uh, we can talk about that later, I don't want to digress anymore.
That, that's something potentially we could, we could bet through during the same sort of, sort of catch-up session with uh, yourself and Commissioner Big.
Uh, any more discussion on zoning matrices? Uh, next thing is uh, take-home vehicles. I asked this because I know on the board previously, uh, over the past few months, it asks, and we've been discussed in the board meetings that I went to. And I, I as a citizen hadn't, or seemed uh, be unresolved at that, and I think, uh, I think you may have given us something today, somewhere.
So historically, the, the board has a, been the approving authority for take-home vehicles that are under the purview of the board commissioners, so. And what Jessica has given you is the, the latest verdict.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I looked at it briefly, um, before we started meeting. So, uh, again, um, we call this a work session today, I think it's more of a get-to-know-each-other session, and I, I'm trying to. I hope everyone understands how I, how I think, how I conceptualize things. So I see this, and I see it's a by name, who has the vehicle, what department they're in. Again, um, my thoughts. Again, um, my thoughts are, uh, in the Army, I had a vehicle. That was assigned to me, I had a driver. I walked out of my office, I stepped into my vehicle, they took me to where I needed to be, I got out. I could use that vehicle for any official function. But I couldn't stop at Burger King in my official government vehicle if I was in my local area where I resided, where my home office was. I couldn't stop. To get something to eat, I couldn't run into the convenience store, uh, unless it was something to do with official duties. I'd go back to the office, I'd get in my private vehicle, and I'd go to lunch. I could not have my wife in my vehicle unless I was going to an official function where there was an expectation, a customary expectation. That a spouse would be there with you, right? That was all policy-driven. It wasn't, um, let, what's this person's case, why, why we think they deserve? Why do they, they need a vehicle, why does this person need a vehicle? It was very policy-driven, right? This is the policy, right? And, um, I was charged in my organization, as the head of my organization, that's what I'm kinda, uh, doing analogy to. A director, a director being in charge of their organization, I was in charge of making sure I complied with the policy. And, uh, you know, we never had to worry about what's going on with vehicles. Cause someone would pick up the phone and call the, a little hotline that says, I saw. Colonel Rue doing this, and somebody would come to investigate, what were you doing, you know, and I just explained it was whatever. So, uh, and that kinda goes back to this whole problem set earlier I was talking about, like, when the, when the public perceives something happening, how do we vet that? So, I say all that to say, um, I don't wanna, I don't wanna know why this person has a vehicle.
I do, on some of them, so.
Yeah, I understand, but I'm saying, I don't wanna, I don't wanna be like, I'm approving this vehicle for this person. I, I would much rather us be a more broad, uh, decision-making authority that says. Here are policies that we believe, uh, our constituents expect us to uphold, right? And then we hold our, our employees accountable to the policies, it goes back to him. And so, uh, do you get there overnight? No, right? But, uh, that was, that was why I wanted to bring that up, I wanted to share, uh, what I've seen in the past and how I think, uh, might be a good way to move forward. I didn't mean throw this out in the day, right, I'm saying that, I'm just saying that, you know, maybe we can charge someone. Go out with the other counties, see if they have a po- a vehicle policy, right? And so, it might be as simple as, uh, replace county name with Upton. And voila, we have a policy. That's all I wanted to share, that's my thoughts, I wanted to, uh, share it out with everybody what I was thinking, so. Any, any other thoughts on the vehicles?
Well, I really wouldn't wanna talk about why this person, an employee specifically in the meeting, has a vehicle. I wanna talk about, uh, the variance from a policy.
You didn't, but I am.
It's fair enough.
And, and it's only a clarification, so somebody that's on a weekend call only, do they have that vehicle all week?
Well, what's in the policy? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, if the policy says they only have the vehicle on the weekend, then they don't have a weekend. But this isn't very clear to that aspect.
And I think that's really more conducive to our form of government, because we've got a county manager form of government, obviously.
Yeah.
This board sets policy, and then the county manager, Jason, decides who gets to take home and why. I mean, that's really, do you disagree with that, Jason?
I mean, typically, that's how it's been, but this is, I mean, in some ways, this just made it easier for me, because this was already established. Just to be perfectly blind, so. And if, if Commissioner Jones was happy with it, then I'm happy with it too. That was, but I'll entertain whatever the, whatever the board wants to do. The one thing I would say is that, um, if you look at that list compared to some of our, um, our comparables, as the chairman might say. That list is a lot smaller than most counties, so. Uh, we are probably more on the restrictive side when it comes to vehicle usage and then take-home usage, so.
So.
There are some things missing, like code enforcement and stuff like that.
So, again, uh, this is very specific. So, and this is, this is, and this is take-home, right? This isn't, this isn't government vehicle use, right? Because you will hear, I've heard, you know. I was behind so-and-so who was in a government vehicle dropping their child off in the drop-off lane, right? What is the policy on having non-government employees in the government?
It's forbidden in our policy.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's where I'm getting at, right? The policy should be covering certain things, not just take-home.
We, we do have a, a pretty comprehensive vehicle usage policy, so this is just the take-home portion. This is just who's permitted to take home. There are obviously a lot more employees that utilize vehicles on a daily basis, and that, we do have a very, very strict policy when it comes to that, so.
And I think those are the calls, so.
And that's also part of the, that's done by resolution and enshrined in the employee handbook, along with just about everything else.
Cause the, those, those are the kind of things, you know, we hear about, so.
And, and the county manager hears a lot about it too.
He does. But, do we do anything about it?
Of course.
Well, we investigate, a- a- anytime a citizen or a, a commissioner sends a, an inquiry, we obviously investigate.
Does this include sheriff employees?
No. Obviously, our take, uh, probably, th- this is one-tenth of our take-home vehicles. Yeah, or maybe even less than that. But those.
Nine-tenths, the sheriff's part.
Any, well, I, since we're, since I'm kinda taking notes for staff action as we go, I know I had that as a, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, as a. Is there, is there anything that the board wants from either Jessica and I as it relates to vehicle policy or take-home per se? Or is this just something, where, where do we go from here, or do we not go anywhere?
So, uh, I, I just wanted to know where we were, because the, the public has asked where we were, right?
Yeah, we saw that in the, uh, meetings.
Maybe we just, uh, set this aside as the agenda for another work session, and just kinda walk through, have staff walk us through that policy.
And we could potentially post our policy on the website for take-home vehicles.
Well, yeah, we, we could do that, I mean, I, I would just say, for agenda purposes, if we put it on our work sessions agenda, so we can kinda sit down and dig into it. If we identify things as a group at that point that we're concerned about or we wanna change, then we'll have an opportunity to have those discussions. And it's letting our constituents know that we're, we're taking their, their concerns seriously.
Got it.
And, Jason, I think the next few are.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, I'm mindful of time, cause I know you have, um, probably looks to be a half-hour executive session or so, but, um. The next few items are just project updates, so is the, the first one is the well project, is that right? So, you, uh, the only thing I included for the agenda is the construction timeline, I know that's probably a little more detail than you want. But is, do you have any questions as relates to this project? Um, we're still showing a completion date in mid-March, so.
How are they faring with the weather and the cold? Do they have any delays?
I've not, I've not been given any indication of any, any delays, and so, they're, they're right now in the, they're expected to mobilize next week.
I saw a lot of work on them. It's just always hard at this time to dig it in the ground, working with water.
I did speak with our engineer, and, um, I think Commissioner Ellington had a question, but he got that answered, did you guys have that right? For the purposes of our, our new commissioners, this actually is really not really a re, uh, we, we've always referred to it as a well rehabilitation. But we're constructing a new well, we're actually gonna maintain the existing well as a backup, and so, we've gotten them both permitted. And over time, the well that we're currently using has been, has diminished in its ability to produce, so, um. But we will keep it online and keep it permitted, this is basically constructing a new one right next to it, so.
I just wanna add this, it popped in my mind, I kinda always have, I lose it if I don't use it. I, I would just ask you please to coordinate with, I guess, the engineer or the contractor that's doing it. And have them coordinate with, uh, that, that fire department, or, or, and that, uh, Hope's Generation Church. Just coordinate anything, cause that, you know, there, it, it's right there at entrance, and, you know, and then, you know, just, just co- just passing coordination. Have the contractor coordinate with us, and I think with Richard and then with Scott and the church, and, uh, just to, uh. Make diagrams, hopefully, keep my phone.
Okay. Uh, just for the, um, newer members of the board, so, um, this is actually pretty important to our community overall, because. Uh, we do have an interconnection on that side of the county with the city. So, in, wh- when our well has been unable to produce, they've been able to provide us with water to supplement. And, yes, wh- which we have negotiated down significantly, which has been great, but, um, they've, they've been great partners with us. Only because, uh, one of the reasons was that this time last year, um, during that deep freeze, when the city system went down, we were able to do it in reverse. So, um, and, and I don't, and, and I know, um, Commissioner Ellington is abundantly familiar with the situation we were in, because. We were trying to balance keeping the city up and running while making sure that our own customers out there didn't lose so much pressure as that it was. So, it was, it was a delicate balance, but, I mean, this is more than just water for the county water system, in my opinion, this is a, a community project, and. This not only will serve our citizens or our customers better, but it will help back up the city customers better, but, so. Yeah, we're, the, we were all in a tough situation this time last year, so, um, the urgency, as you pro- probably heard from Commissioner Ellington, this is, this is. We'd be glad to get the project finished, so. If you have any other specific questions on it, just, you can shoot me an email or, or let me know. So, the next is just a quick update on where we are with our paving project, as you can see, we're still. Oh, judicial center. So, we have, I'm gonna do this one from memory, cause I was just on the phone with Jamie before the meeting started. We have gone through our final punch list, it has not, our, um, architect has not come back to do the verification walkthrough yet. We actually successfully held Superior Court in the new building yesterday. So, in my ex, my expectations were that we were gonna have more hiccups than we've had, so it's, in, in, in my opinion, our, our, our. Soft, smooth opening has gone very, very well. Security is up and running, um, so, I mean, you're being screened to get in and out of the building. I think the sheriff is taking the absolute correct approach, he's got it probably locked down more than it will end up being in the future, he's just. And, and I agree with the approach wholeheartedly, he's taken the approach that we're gonna probably do too much at the beginning to try to find out. Where it evens out at the end, and I think he's going to adjust his courthouse security plan appropriately based on that. We, we have a few, we had an issue over the weekend, we had, uh, an air handler, um, burnout in the area of the pro-bait court. So, we have one area of the building where, uh, it's a little cooler than they would like. It's a warranted item, warranty time, so I, I see what the one-year warranty and all that is. So, my construction people are telling me it's a design issue, and my ATAC people are telling me it's a design issue, so there'll be some. Adjustments to the ASBILT on that, but they're working on it today. They're working through access controls, I mean, it, you know, everything seems great in the design, so now that they're using it. You know, we're, what we're right, we're just taking the approach as like, just everyone use the building for three or four months, and let's. We'll take the recommendations, and then we'll start to address them as we get maybe halfway through the year. So, working with the sheriff's office, we may add, subtract, and/or change some of the badge access points, maybe relocate a few cameras. I think one of the other small issues we're having is, uh, cell phone communication in certain areas of the building, so IT is working on. Coaching everyone to use, um, wifi calling, and then they're, they're making sure that, no. That on the dead spots, which are mostly on the ground floor, down in the deed room, that you'll have at least if you've got wifi calling enabled on your phone, and you won't have any issues. Other, they're installing the plaque for the outside. Right at the entrance? So, right as you walk into security, it'll be on that pillar. Uh, that's really the only item that they have left to deliver, aside from the dry wells for those two parking spots, they're going, they're being installed over. The holiday weekend, over MLK weekend. So, they're gonna wait until the buildings close?
Yeah, I was down there this morning, and it was high-stone.
Very first foot, a drywall, something they don't, core hole, in space.
Yeah.
So, many big deep, and, or, same there or something.
That's my understanding, that, that's the extent of how I understand a drywall work.
Yeah, but.
I didn't even know what.
Well, I didn't Google it, I mean, I didn't know what it is.
Well, I call the drywall, and you dig a hole, try to find water, you don't get any. That's, that's how the engineering.
Yeah, and, and we have a sizable rain. It's not a really good fix. But my other thing, you know, that I, I was down there this morning, and I didn't really have time to, to walk and look, I, I did a few things down there this morning. But, uh, I didn't see anything that we talked about that they fixed. The paint, the ductwork, you know, I, I didn't have time to go upstairs, see if they fixed the railings and all that stuff that. That weren't attached to the walls right. I don't see that they did any of that.
You know, you'd have to show me individually, so, I mean, I, I mean, I did the, I did the walkthrough initially, and, and I know you and I walked through together.
Yeah, I mean, I, I didn't see anything that, the, uh, the railings going up into the thing where they welded and everything, they haven't been polished out or anything.
What were you talking about, exterior or interior?
That's exterior, the interior was the painting, you walk in and you see big old spots on the wall that, it just doesn't have enough paint on it. You know, and that was one of the checklists, there wasn't enough paint on the walls. And then the ductwork that had all that tape all over it is still there, you know?
Well, I'm glad to go back there with you, I mean, we, we haven't authorized any of the retainage yet, cause we haven't had the architectural firm come back and, and review the punch items, so. So, that all that is still open until they come back, so.
I, I think they still are, I know some tables are missing and chairs and that sort of thing, so.
That's, that's the FFNE contract, so, and, uh, and I'm glad you mentioned the, uh, the pews are, are still. Gonna be installed in later days, cause those, those are custom and a little delayed, but that's not part of the construction.
No, tomorrow, all four courtrooms will be working. According to them, all four courtroom will be holding.
Yeah, I got something, I just wanna add that, some of them, those are complex, and I, I, I've had a conversation before, and, and, and it was addressed, but now it's unaddressed again. Somehow, I, I don't know if it's the D O T, I would assume it's be all D O T. Those signs is, we got, we got signs right there beside our go-ma-complex sign, and these, these constituents called me, wanted to look at it, but, you know, I got a very good point. There's a couple signs there, event, twist, turn, you know, some of those signs have been there since I was in high school, you know, I'm pretty young.
That was a long.
So, they've, they've actually.
We, we need to contact D O T and have them pushed up or something, I mean, just.
The interesting.
Well, we had done, we actually did do that, they came and straightened the. Well, we had done, we actually did do that. They came and straightened them up and then put them right back where they were.
We need to request, uh, well, I mean, look, I mean, if we don't have any pool with the DOT of the county of us, we're in bad shape.
They're all standing straight now, but they're all.
When you say porch them up, I mean, I, I, I don't think there's.
Another question related to that entrance, the, um, monument sign, lettering, was there any resolution to that? I know.
It's supposed to be changed, is what I was hoping.
Well, yeah, so the architect said it wasn't right, the GC said it was the first spec, and I, I know that they were gonna get back together, but have, have you heard anything on that?
Well, when, when they presented that, with, the, they presented that to me to resolve, and, uh, in my determination, the GC put exactly on those letters what was spec. So, if we wanna change it, then that's something that we'll, that we can change once we, you know, we can put that on a, on our, on our logo punch list items.
I think we should change that. And we always still have, what was the savings on that, you know, off your head?
No, I can go back and find out. Um, lastly, we're probably, like, you know, we're looking at a deductive change order still, so the, the project's still, not significantly under budget, but I think it's probably gonna be a deductive change order in between about eight now of them, so. Any other questions about that? And I am checking in with different elected officials, asking how their experiences are on the new building, and it's been extraordinarily positive. More positive than I really could have imagined, cause if you're thinking about, you're thinking about a number of varying factors, these, these departments are not, they're used to having their own space, and as the, I think as the probate judge put it to me, she said, well, I'm getting used to having the scheduled courtroom space because, you know, her courtroom just sat empty until she wanted to use it. But, in that same sentence, she sent a, a, a sort of very glowing review of how, how things were going and how nice it is to be there with all their judicial colleagues and how more efficient it is, and, um, so obviously, as we're working through small punch items, and we'll be doing that throughout the course of the calendar year, um, the reviews have been pretty good.
Yeah, they were really happy this morning.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's just, it's, it's a safe, it's a place for.
Bright area, a lot of light, they were really happy.
Yeah.
And the judges were too, according to.
When judges are happy, yes. We're happy too. Next item?
Yeah, if you wanna, uh, next item?
Um, I think I just have a one pager on there about how far we've gotten. Um, I do not have a, a remobilization time yet. Obviously, it's, we're weather dependent, it's, um, if I remember correctly, Mr. Jones, is is it forty degrees in rising for, for them, for them to be out there, so it's, it's probably gonna be sometime before. Yeah, we're probably looking at getting into March before we're in room, so. But, um, I've been pretty pleased with the work so far. Obviously, the EMC provides like, um, onsite inspections, so, um, I, I get their individual inspection reports from each section, but, and those are available if you wanna see them.
You, you, you look at the list and, you know, they're, they're increments of miles, but they, they total up quick. But these roads haven't been paved in fifty years, so.
This is probably the first time they've ever surfaced most of them.
Right.
Uh, lastly, I'll add, just, uh, we did do a, um, an ad alternate for the, uh, airport parking lot because the, um, airport authority was looking at getting some state and federal funds to support that. Um, it looks like they have found those funds, so we're now in the process of getting them the specs, so the specs can be approved by DOT, so it looks like that, that we'll get, out of that project, we'll get a, uh, what is that, a ninety-seven point five percent reimbursement. Unless you have any specific, if you ever have any specific questions about any of our ongoing capital projects, I always, during a work session, try to give you a good overview. But anytime you have a specific question, or if, if, especially if we've got sort of third-party crews in or some of your constituents and they, they have questions, just let me know, we can address that, so. We've had a lot of success with the current partners that we're using to oversee these projects on my behalf. I, I think our ability to respond to constituents' concerns are, are pretty high, so, um, we can usually get something resolved pretty quickly. When we're doing road work, it goes without saying, you're gonna get calls from constituents that have, where, where we may have messed up their right of way, or knocked over their metal locks, or, and when I say we, some of the construction crews, that please just forward those to me, we'll get the crew to handle it. Um, that's all I've got on that.
Okay.
All field. Get that one open. Has, has anyone had a chance to go see the, the work besides Commissioner Watson?
Every Saturday and Monday.
So, I'm just, I'll give you the highlights. So, the, uh, field grading is about seventy-five percent done, they're about sixty-five percent done with the drainage lines. We're about half done with sod, about eighty percent on dugout construction, uh, where we have not started on fencing and backstops yet. The new lighting is a hundred percent installed, they're about twenty-five percent of the way untying it into the, to the new electrical.
Yeah, Paul, he called me when we were walking in, he has a really good idea. I think he may have mentioned a few in regards to the batting cages. He thinks he could probably pull that in-house and do it for much cheaper.
We did talk about.
A lot more extensive than what we're looking at.
Right.
I think we should look at that.
And we are, yeah.
Kind of setting back our agreement or contract.
We can deduct it.
Deduct it. They, they have been, um, they have been an excellent firm to work with so far, so, what, we had what we call, we had a fitful week and a half start with them, and then it has been, they've been unbelievable ever since, so. Their, their site presence is great, um, they keep it very, very well signed and roped off, so like, safety's very high, cause you know, it's high traffic with children, and anytime you've got children in construction sites, so I've been very pleased with the way they've been handling the project so far.
When I have sat, had some complaints just regarding the access fields, I mean, obviously, we knew we had to shut it down, and the winter's the best time to do that. But we do have this new home plate relationship where there's tryouts in a couple of weeks, and there's, there's parents that are wanting to practice. I think Brian's got a solution to that, to work with the city and use the Weaver Park, and you can go out there and help maintain it a little bit. Um, just wanna make sure we at least have an option or something.
Yeah, and we, you know, as this board knows, we work very closely with the city staff, so anytime they say, hey, can you come over here and help out with Weaver Park or whatever, we, we, we do it, um, cause we utilize a lot of the space for practice, they're not great fields.
Isn't that priceless?
But, um, but they will suffice for that short amount of time while these are out. Um, so the phase two, so connecting from the end of the year to the beginning of this year, the, uh, bid packages for phase two will release, and that's basically the, the demolition and construction of a new, um, concession stand and installation of the batting cages. So, we should have prices to you in early February about whether or not we wanna proceed with that phase or not. And I've already been in, in, uh, detailed discussions with Alan about, about funding, so we're taking sort of wild guesses at what some of these costs might be. You know, there's a potential that we not, might not have enough phase, or, what do we, we're not, but, uh, we call it not phase two, from the twenty-sixteen spots, level two, to cover it, in which case, we would probably have, wanna have a sit-down meeting with the city to see where, how they want to proceed, so. Just to give you an idea, those are, those twenty-sixteen funds were sort of approved for, um, capital projects on joint projects. And this phase two may exceed what we have remaining in those, within, in which we would have to go to the city to see if they wanted to fund their thirty-two percent of what the additional cost would be from their existing splosh. In their current splosh, they have funds for, uh, public facilities just like we do, and we would just need to see if they would match theirs with ours to fill the gap if that was needed, so. Unsure if we're gonna need to have that conversation or not, we won't know until the bids on this phase come back, so. So, we hope to present that pricing to you at your next work session if we stick with the first Wednesday of the month, so. We hope to be planning on it this spring, so we're on schedule.
You can do with that. I think we've got two more items we need to do.
Dashboard and retreat.
So, I didn't include a, you, did you include a copy of the dashboard? I didn't thi- I didn't think it was necessary. Um, typically, for the last, what, five year, we've been working from what we call our projects and priorities dashboard, I think is what we end up with the title. And this was just a opportunity for me to ask the board, do we wanna continue sort of using that as our mechanism to decide our special project, so. What, if, if the answer was potentially yes, then what I would go do is I would modify that to match some of what we've discussed here today, put a priority list on that, and then have it ready for either your consent agenda or your, um, um, new business agenda to, just to prove basically sort of ratifying the general direction that you want myself and the staff to go. So, I, I think it's been very helpful for us, certainly not advocating to get rid of it, um, but it, it's not, certainly not perfect, and if, you know, if there was issues you had with it or recommendations for a different way to do business, I'm certainly open to that. I mean, it, it is potentially overly simplistic, but getting back to the chairman's point, if he, he can't see it on one page, you'd be able to see everything we're working on on one page, and we can continue that, and, I, but I wanna make sure that we're giving you what you want.
Yeah, I just wanna, I was, I was looking at it, and, uh, again, I, I know I have a lot of great, I don't wanna say great ideas, I know I have a lot of ideas, right? Um, but I'm not coming in, I don't wanna come in kicking down doors and trying to, let's do this, let's do that. I, I'm sharing my ideas with you. I wanna get around to every, uh, department, you know, at the, as you schedule me, so I can learn more about what they do, what their opportunities are, um, and how we might can help them. And I'm interested in your dashboard. Uh, I'm also interested, you know, having run large organizations previously, I'm interested in what kind of systems we have, if we have them, where we automate, uh, staffing, routing approvals, uh, if that exists, and, and other softwares out there that you can get. I'm not spending more money, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm curious as to what we have.
That's it, we can show you what we want.
But I, I will say this, uh, you know, there are some things that are, are investments that give you a return, right? That make, uh, us more efficient and make us able to do more, um, for our constituents and make us, uh, more effective because we all have a, uh, you know, situational awareness, uh, and that's really what it's all about. If we all understand where we're at on any given thing the same, and we don't have keep checking in and, and, uh, you know, make sure, and I, I didn't talk to Chris, I need to go talk to Chris, you know, if we all have the same picture, uh, it's easier to make decisions, right? And so, uh, again, it'll take time for me to get around and you show me things, and we'll learn where we're at, and we'll, we'll see where, if we're, where we wanna be, or if there's opportunities.
Yeah, I like the dashboard. I think it shows us, um, you know, what we've accomplished, too. I mean, almost all of it has been checked off.
They have, yeah.
Well, or will be in four months.
Well, it also keeps us focused, uh, cause I think we're, uh, soon to learn. Uh, we, we, you pulled in a lot of different directions, I mean, and, uh, we, we gotta identify some things that we, we all agree to tackle. They're on that list.
Chairman, it did priority.
Right, and we, and we were, we defined those as priorities, and, and, and when we.
And they change.
Right, and then it does change, I mean, but I, 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 I would probably recommend, which is already stated, just, just, let's get a good look at what we got, and, I mean, you know. Somebody's got a better idea, I ain't know.
And I think for that, last item, I had just had, if there's, um, Mr. Chairman, if I may, there's a couple of items, um, the, the sheriff texted me and was saying, hey, will you, uh, can, while you're in your work session, will you inquire about the, the status of his ability to order, to make his fleet order? Um, is that something you want him to come present to y'all?
Well, that's in our organs. I mean, if you spend it on splosh dollars, all splosh dollars are approved by this board. Uh, I, I, I mean, I think we codify that, 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 that is part of our organs, uh, so, uh, next. Unless this board sees fit here, let people spend splosh dollars without.
But, uh, P, I'm just saying, sure, uh, we've already talked about fleet management, and do we have fleet management? That kinda goes back to government vehicles and things, and, uh, I haven't spoken to the sheriff, but he probably has the biggest fleet I would imagine. I'm all about saving dollars, and, uh, we can buy vehicles, right? We can lease vehicles, we can contract to have vehicles, uh, again, I would always ask that we're always looking at what are our options out there. Each year, when we say, okay, it's time to get two new vehicles, or three new vehicles, whatever, you know, uh, you can look around at surrounding counties. If you go to La Grange Police Department, they don't own a single vehicle, right? They use Enterprise, uh, the loan part don't need. They provide the police vehicles, they're leased for five years, at the end of five years, they roll over and they got a new vehicle. They're spending about the same money that they would spend buying vehicles, but they always have a brand-new vehicle, uh, well-maintained, and, uh, you know, we're not, we're not saving fenders off the wreck vehicle in case we bust another fender, it's, uh, it's a, there, there's, there's options out there, and I hope we explore them while we're on the team.
Yeah, excellent. Um, and I think that was, for, as far as updates, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Retreat.
Retreat. Oh, okay, well, um, sorry, I forgot. If that's just a, uh, direction to staff, is that something that you want us to pursue trying to schedule?
I think it's, it's helpful. It was helpful for me when I first came in, we went and did, that's what established that dashboard. And it just gives us an opportunity, we can all work around our schedules. You can take the time off and you can focus on those items. It's basically a long work.
Yeah, I, I, I look at that, uh, kinda like offsite or whatever, you know, where you're, you're focused, um, I, I do see the benefit in those type of gatherings, um. I, I'm just gonna throw out some thoughts, like, my thoughts, is, uh, it's an open meeting. Like, wherever it is, it's open meeting, and the public's invited to attend and, and, and witness, and, uh, whatever we decide to do, I just wanna keep that in mind, uh, it should be where they can get to, right? So, I think there should be a very small radius of where we wanna go. I also, uh, wanna say we should all, uh, be conscious of the budget, you know, you know, we wanna spend money, uh, on, on a facility, or is there another facility that we can use for free? Um, are we close enough that we don't have to pay for hotel rooms and those kinda things? Those are all the things I would be requiring about before we even talk about the agenda, so, just share it out with you.
Uh, the other thing I would, I'd like to throw out there is that since we're sort of newly constituted as a team, historically, staff, um, I think, I think my, I think my first go at one was, um, I facilitated it myself, and then, you know, it was, was so new then, just didn't have time to pivot, and then that next year, I had it facilitated by one, by ACCG. My preference this year is because we're now sort of newly constituted as a team, I would, I would, and they don't charge us for it, but I would ask that we have it facilitated again, at least for this first year. Staff can pretty much take it after that, but, and we are at the stage in our dashboard where we have room to add now. So, I think it would be a little bit more of a whiteboard retreat than it would be, uh, this is all the stuff we've been hammering away on, you know, let's be careful what we add. I think we're okay to start stretching again. I think, you know, we always need to be looking at, you know, not just our five-year capital plan, but all the goals and objectives in our comprehensive plan, so we probably need to spend time reviewing those things. And I think having it facilitated by one of the, like, Bill or somebody else at ACCG would be great, because then I could be more. then I could be more of a participant and then less of a facilitator. And, and Jessica, and he could too, too. That, just a thought.
Certainly open, so that, that concludes the agenda that we have for today. Are there any? Yeah, I know, I was saying, are there any final comments before we close this meeting and go into executive session?
Yeah, I got, I got something I want, we need to start talking about this new house bill. When we, when we have to have an answer on March one, yeah, so we need to, yeah.
So House Bill five eighty-one is what we're talking about. I, I, I'm looking, are you, let me?
Yes.
So Jason and I are going to Macon on Monday, just like we have the A C C G for county commissioners, the assessors have their own organization, and I don't wanna call the name off the top of my head, but they're gonna present in Macon on this bill and kind of lay it out for everyone, and hopefully lay these terms. So we'll be there for that Monday, and hopefully return more knowledgeable, and have a better grasp of how we can move forward with this. I won't even share my initial thoughts, I'm like, yeah, we'll just learn, and then we'll come back together.
Yeah, cause, you know, James and I were supposed to attend one of those, and then Hurricane came, and they canceled it, but they never rescheduled. So, well, there's a lot to learn about this new house bill.
Yeah, and I've got the basics down, but how, how it's actually supposed to be calculated depends on some rulemaking by Department of Revenue. That's what we hope, and I think the Department of Revenue is actually supposed to be the M C of this, so. Right now, we don't know how to calculate a potential effect, so.
Man, I'm just a little perplexed by some of it, just cause of the stuff I'm hearing, like Monroe County doing the thing, I get the school board part of it, but it, it, it seems complex, and I just think that, hey, obviously, I was overwhelmed when I supported local here, I supported, but I, I think it's our duty to, to dig in a little bit and find out what caused the effect that is gonna be on our digest, and I just don't know the things or stuff.
And it's possible to have multiple digest.
Right, so I learned that in our conversation yesterday, and those, those type of things, I was thinking, we need, we need to be prepared to, because, because at the end of the day, you know who's gonna get phoned off? Us, and we, we need to be able to explain that, and if we can't explain it, then it doesn't make us look very good.
But we'd like to add just a couple of comments here, and you and I had a great conversation about this the other day. You know, a couple of things, like, so our, our neighbor has already made a determination that they were, that they're potentially gonna opt out of it. Our neighbors don't have an, they don't have an existing local homestead like we do, so, you know, and I was just in contact with our chief appraiser this morning. Our local homestead exemption is also floating in that it's adjusted for C P I every year. So I think what we definitely have the potential for is that the most, the, the way the legislation is written, and we opt in by taking no action. So say we're, we're, say we've opted in, we've taken no action, now what the assessor's office has to do is determine, is your Upson County exemption better for you than the state exemption? And they have to make that calculation and give you the better of the two, this or that. And in most cases, I theorize, but cannot show you, that our local exemption early on will be better than the state exemption. So I think what will happen in time is that as property values, if they continue to exceed C P I, that, they go this way. Now, there's always going to be properties that are gonna get the state exemption over the local, cause ours is a fixed amount versus a percentage of growth, so, right? Ours really benefits the lower end of the scale, which that's what the board had intended for. Some of the higher property values, the state exemption will probably outpace the local very quickly. But I think in terms of the lower value properties, our local, it may not ever, it may not ever, the state exemption may not ever exceed the locals, and that depends on how, if property values exceed C P I, cause ours, our local exemption is tied to C P I.
Yeah, and so that's, it's, it's, it's kind of confusing, and, and what we gotta be mindful of here is, we opt in, we're in, okay? And everybody's perception is, it was, it was advertised as you, you tax break, you know, you're gonna be capped, you know, all, and so everybody's like, my taxes is gonna wait, my taxes aren't going up, you know, and I don't want to get thirty years into this and have not known what the effects could be, and then when our statistics come back and go, well, why did you do this? My taxes aren't supposed to go up, and we're like, we just, we need to do a homework.
Cause it, it does not negate our local exemption, so it, it causes us to have to make a calculation and give the homeowner which is the better of the two. Which, which undoubtedly will be a challenge for the assessor's office to be able to.
That'll be if we opt in, we'll have.
Well, you're in, you're in, you opt out. Opting in is no action.
I'm saying if you, if we opt in, then we still have the option of going with our local.
We have, that by law, we will have to make that calculation.
But you're always being, wanting.
And, and one more thing just to consider, as we're gonna go gather more information Monday, hopefully with a, with a clear understanding of where we're headed. The potential one penny sales tax still has to go to a referendum to get approved, one, two. It cannot be a windfall tax. It will only go to roll back what you potentially would have gotten on your existing digest, so it's not additional revenue for us. So it's not a fix-all, forget it, let everyone get their homestead, cause we're gonna get this full penny, that's not how that works. So it's, it only goes to roll back what the difference would be. And it's not even the, if I, and if I think I read it correctly, and was, and I've been to one training session already, it's not even a full penny if the full penny creates a windfall.
You, you did it right.
Yep, correct, yeah.
If you opt out, can you opt in at a later date?
Yes, you have to do that by local legislation. One last thing to consider, I'm sorry, is your, our state delegation could opt us in anyway. If they, they, there's nothing to prevent them from dropping the legislation and getting it approved, you know? So if, if, even if Monroe County, they've, they've opted out, there's nothing to prevent their local delegation from putting, putting forward a, something that would take it to a referendum and let them decide it for themselves locally. So you, I mean, it, it, so I, I think if you are opting out, then you have to have that conversation with your delegation, so, about whether they support that or not, because they are part of the equation.
And I can send you guys, on my last A C C G meeting, they had a big discussion on this, and there's a lot of just bullet point summary of it, I can send it to each of y'all. Y'all may have it or don't want it.
Any other closing comments? I'll just say, thank you everybody for bearing with me in my first meeting. I think this was good, I know we have some things we wanna follow up on, and we get better at being specific and going after things, but I think today was a good meeting to get to know each other, and to know how we think, and that's why I tried to do it for. I'm looking forward to working with each other.
I wanna make a recommendation we could air for this fix.
I'll say.
Want to pay for a proposal? So we're proposing going to executive session specifically for a discussion of personnel and litigation matters. I, I will post it to my personal YouTube.
Can you close that?